Just give me a thumbs up. Let's call the meeting to order. Please rise and pledge the flag. Would you call a roll, please, Renee?
Commissioner Green.
Here.
Commissioner Canfield.
Here.
Commissioner Orthline.
Here.
Vice Mayor Stanley.
Here.
Mayor Morgan.
Here.
Let it also be known that in attendance today is Town Manager Dunham, Assistant Town Attorney Nazaro, Chief Jones, Acting CFO Mark Bymaster, and myself.
Very good, thank you. We've been presented with the minutes from our last meeting on February 9. Any comments, corrections, changes, or additions?
Motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting, February 9.
Second.
Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Canfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Orthline.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Stanley.
Yes.
Mayor Morgan.
Yes. Mr. Dunham, we have a little change to the agenda?
Yes, Mayor. On under 10 items for commission action, we're going to switch positions with C and D.
Pretty good. Anything else?
See, have we told you we're adding a fee schedule issue on under manager's permit?
Under management. Just comments, it's around here somewhere.
Nine, four.
Yes.
Yes.
Anything else?
That's it.
Thank you. Our next meeting will be April 12 at 9:00 a.m. For anyone who wishes to attend, public comment. Anyone wish to speak? Very good. Move on then to the public hearing. Before we begin, any expert day communications by commission members on any application today?
None here.
None, very good. Let's move on then. Anyone who will speak today on any application, please rise and be sworn. Mr. Marsh, you're up.
Good morning. Mark Marsh, TB Bridges Marsh and Architects. I'm here today with Keith Williams of Navara Williams, the landscape architect. And we're here representing Joe and Missy Walsh, who came to be here today. This is, some of you may be familiar with the house. It's 1350 North Ocean Boulevard on the ocean side. And it is a house that was built in the late 90s. It was patterned off of a kind of a model home that was developed mainly in Boca. And it, you'll see it represents kind of that Boca Mediterranean appearance. There were two other similar houses in town. I know one in Ocean Ridge with the same floor plan. So obviously, there was a speculative approach to how these were developed. The problem with the house is that it's not very livable as it stands today. And the Walshes bought it about a year and a half ago and have worked with Keith and myself to try to develop and change the use and the appearance of the house. We're here today for three approvals, a North Ocean Boulevard, double A district, a demolition permit, and a level three approval. The site is, as I've said, it's about 400 yards or north of the DNT, just to give you a location. It's situated with the pool on the ocean. And I'm gonna just breeze over this and let Keith kind of take you through. From a development standpoint, the square footage on the house is about 8700 square feet. We are planning to do some major demolition to reduce the awkwardness in the house, which I'll show you shortly, but stay under that square footage. It complies with the setbacks, and I think it's gonna be a big improvement to what's there currently. So with that, let's continue. This is the existing house, and I think you can see better in your packets most likely. But it's a house that has a lot of angles and a lot of decorations. There's a huge amount of decoration or ornament on the existing house. So we're dealing with two issues. One is the number of awkward angles there and the appearance of the house. Next, please. This is the existing floor plan, and you can see there are four 90-degree corners in the whole floor plan, both up and lower floors. Everything has this 45-degree chamfer. And I just shared with the ARPB that this was done where lots were smaller and tighter. And it was an illusion by architects to kind of go away from that tunnel appearance that you have in narrow lots. But it creates very awkward spaces, and the Walshes have been living in there. And it just doesn't allow for, you know, appropriate use of the space. So what we're taking, second, next one, please. Again, upstairs, very similar, a lot of angles, awkwardness, we have a two-story open space. The whole second floor is basically gallery, so it doesn't really lend itself to a modern living. So, next, please. In the demo, what we're proposing to do is remove some of these, or the majority, if not all, of the angular elements on the form of the house. And we are going to demolish the garage, because you'll see that shaded area up in the top left-hand. That's where the garage is. And again, that's on a 45-degree. So when you arrive, you have to drive around and enter from a northwest approach. It's very, very strange. Next, please. So what we're doing here is, this is our proposed floor plan, which we're making spaces regular, taking the angles out. We're rotating the garage so you can at least have reasonable access to it. And really creating a much more conforming use to the lot. The plan is pretty straightforward. It's a four-bedroom house. Nothing extravagant. Next, please. This is the second, this is the existing second floor. Again, demo, the areas that are shaded will be demolished. There's a staircase. You can see that semicircular stair, which is, doesn't even meet code. It's a hazard. Next, please. And this is the new upstairs, where we've maintained one corner on the northwest of the upper floor where a tub, but everything else, we're removed. A lot of the upper balconies that don't serve any purpose. So we really try to simplify it. So what we're doing is converting it from this, I call it the Boca Mediterranean, because it's, excuse me, it's not true Mediterranean in its character. It has the elements, but not the composition. And we're now changing it to a Anglo-Caribbean look, which is, I think, more appropriate for the town. Next, please. This is the roof plan, again, highly simplified compared to what's there now. So we will be taking the roof off just to create a much more conforming and attractive roof structure. Next. What I've done here is given you a before and after. The lower image is the existing, and you can see the ornament that I referred to, all these little things. That's just a fake tune, isn't it? This one works, but the makeup and composition is so erratic. And the scale of outlookers, they're not consistent. So what we're proposing is to convert it to this more, you know, peaceful Anglo-Caribbean look. We'll be using a shingle, not a barrel tile roof. We've got the decoration again, it's very, you know, traditional, creating shutters and leaving the pitch, introducing what we call the pitch break, which is this subtle change at the, where the angle of the slope of the pitch changes. Next, please. This is actually, shows you more of the ornament. These balconies have never been used. They're just there for decoration. This is just cut through the courtyard, which I'll leave Keith to describe how he's proposing to develop that. Next, please. And this is the rear, and you can see there's a mixture of all kinds of elements. The butt-bending metal railings, which don't go with the style. There's some arches, some flat tops. It's just a combination of a lot of elements, which we're trying to, again, simplify, and we're using, you know, out looking cypress rafters under these. And the fenestration will be very balanced and obviously taking advantage of the view to the ocean. Next, please. These are the two sides. And I must note, it hasn't been done yet, but ARPB requested, as you saw on the two front and back, there were shutters. We are going to add shutters to the window fenestration so that there's a surround treatment to the house. Next. Again, this is the north side. You can see just a change, and you can see, you can appreciate now the juxtaposition of all these roofs versus just creating a simple, and the mass of the house is actually going to be reduced, which I think is an important thing. Next. These are just sections through the house proposed. Next. And then, these are just renderings to show the entry from the motor court, which Keith will go through entering to the front door. And again, the rear of the house, which is much more casual and traditional to that Anglo-Caribbean style. I will answer any architectural questions, or shall I let Keith do his presentation?
Questions? You're keeping the walls of the, you're doing an awful lot of work to this house, right?
You were keeping primarily the foundation, I should have pointed out, which I did at ARPB. This was built before the coastal control construction line moved west. This was in the late 90s. The CCCL line that we know today moved in 97. The advantage we have is that this house is on piles, which was very, there was a lot of foresight, obviously, done. So we're going to keep the foundation, the majority of the foundation, because it's on piles. So that's what we're going to work with.
Everything else, pretty much.
It depends. It's gonna be, you know, I guess, yeah, we'll just see as we go along. It's a challenge, because you're taking something that really doesn't make much functional sense.
Right. I mean, the way you were describing it, it's so much work. It's so much of.
Oh, yeah. It's gonna be extensive. Absolutely, you know. And that's a lot of surgical work, but we're using a lot of the structure that's there, primarily the pilings, because it's.
It's a vast improvement. I think everyone would agree.
Absolutely.
Good. Okay. Next, I'd like.
Good morning. For the record, Keith Williams and Navara Williams Design. You know, I will just point out that the program isn't very dissimilar to what exists today. We're just kind of modifying and reconfiguring materials and layouts and things like that to improve not only aesthetics, but function and create more of a positive program. So the entrance off of North Ocean remains between the trees. We have a new wall, new gate. We're keeping the existing vegetation and trees along that street side, and we're adding to it, so it'll become very dense. The approach takes you into a forecourt, which now is circular. We're proposing it to be square, so it feels like it's more formal, sitting in a garden. The access into the garage isn't too dissimilar, but it changed a little bit. It allows us to add more landscaping to separate that forecourt from the service side of the house. We're pushing the wall out, which now exists between the two buildings closer to the front door. We're actually proposing a low wall off the southwest corner of the garage that will continue, have a gate hedging on both sides, so then that space becomes more private, a larger entertainment space. If they wanted to have a party, it was too windy on the ocean side, they could use the terrace and the gardens and the walkways off the front door. Through the, on the north side of the house, through the, there's a connection between the garage and the main house with glass and windows, so we have a little courtyard, a little bit of water that sits off the property line and is surrounded by gardens. And then we're enhancing all the screening buffering with palm trees, pigeon plum trees, seagrass trees, to create, you know, privacy and to protect the rest of the gardens from the wind and the salt there. The pool is a new pool, but it sits pretty much exactly where the existing pool is today. We're reducing the amount of pavement in the back, so it's more green, more lawn, juxtaposing the palms around the pool to create a little bit of a green canopy, shadow, and some movement on the ground with the palm fronds. And proposing a wall to the east to give us a level field, so to speak, between the main house and the end of the pool. And then we'll have a series of steps that take you down to the lower level, and then you go out to the beach side. I know some of the comments from the last meeting were the front wall on North Ocean. And if you want to go to the next slide, you can see where we've added more. The intention was always to make this wall go away and disappear, but did not show up on the renderings at the last presentation. So here, we're proposing silver-sol palmettos, green olive ficus, bill of dendrum. And then, of course, the trees will stay, the palms, majority of the palms will stay. We are removing some of them, because they're not healthy. And we can look at them and say, oh, those are beautiful, but they're not healthy, and they're not gonna make it too much longer. So some palms will come out. We're adding some custom trees along the front, not in a row, they're kind of positioned in and out to create a little bit depth, but it, you know, it's pretty dense. I think it's, the wall goes away. You want to go to the next slide? These are just elevations to show you our intent to screen the neighbors and to provide privacy for our clients. You can go to the next slide. Same, same situation on both the north and south sides. There are, there was a comment about royal palms in the middle of the existing motor court now. Those are massive palms, and the energy and the amount of money and the equipment to move those palms to save them just outweigh the cost of bringing in new palms. So we are still proposing to take those away. But the mitigation in terms of the amount of trees and palms we're bringing in supersedes those three royal palms by far. This is the east side of the house, where you can see we're adding more trees. Not blocking views, but we are creating that canopy and that green ceiling above the pool and the lawn area. Planking the loggia with seagrass trees, and then you can see on the north and south sides, where we've beefed up the amount of screening as well. I think, you know, the neighbors, obviously, on the first floor won't be able to see, but the second floor, they'll be able to see over that vegetation. I think that's pretty much it. That's my presentation. Unless you have any questions.
There's no Australians on the A1A side, I take it. There's no Australian pines there, are there?
I think, can we keep those, or are we gonna have to take those out? Well, they're not in the coastal.
I don't, I don't think so either. Oh, you're asking if there's. Curious, because you're doing a good bit of landscaping there. Yeah, I don't think I'm that far. Questions, comments?
Just one question on the, how did the vegetation expected on the new wall facing A1A? Is that 70% coverage, or how do you think about that?
Well, in terms of seeing the wall?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say 100% coverage. We will, we will add, you know, like.
Height-wise as well?
Height-wise, now the green olive ficus would be anywhere from three feet to four feet. The silver-sol palmetto, about the same. And then we are putting sea plum vine on the wall to cover it. So it'll wipe it out. It's actually a tree. We train it like a vine, but it's perfect.
It looks good.
Nice looking project.
Yeah.
Huge improvement.
Yeah. Neighbor comments?
Yeah, we're not.
Not. Yeah, I mean, it's a vast improvement. Entire project. It's gonna be, it's gonna be a big one. Okay, no other comments, questions? How about some motions?
We've got three motions here. First motion is motion to approve a North Ocean Boulevard overlay permit to allow a new gate and relocate the driveway to the south, to better align motor court approach.
Second.
Ms. Basil?
Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Canfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Orthline.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Stanley.
Yes.
Mayor Morgan.
Yes.
Second motion is a motion to approve a demolition permit and to permit a partial demolition of existing Spanish Mediterranean residents.
Second.
You failed. I think.
Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Canfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Orthline.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Stanley.
Yes.
Mayor Morgan.
Yes.
Third motion is motion to approve a level three architectural site plan based on the finding that a partial demolition of the existing Spanish Mediterranean residents upsetting the architecture of Anglo Caribbean, new renovations within the existing footprint of a non-conforming residence, moving the existing driveway south, and a new gate and fencing meet the minimum ten design manual applicable review standards.
Second.
Renee?
Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Canfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Orthline.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Stanley.
Yes.
Mayor Morgan.
Yes. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
All right, next up, Mr. Eliopoulos. This is 1465 North Ocean.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, for the record, Gary Eliopoulos, address is 1045 East Atlantic Avenue. We are GE Architecture, representing 1465 North Ocean. Here today with us is Christian Mendoza. He's our presentation artist that you'll see. And we do have our clients. They are here. They were sworn in. Should you have any questions for them after our presentation? You know, I think this is a great example of a project where the ARPB board did what they had to do. They looked at this project. You guys saw it last month for a small portion. They wanted to see more. They wanted to see more options. And with the uniqueness of this project, it made sense. It also made sense, because we have a budding neighbor that's not only a budding, but they're attached to us. So again, you want to take everything into consideration. We'll go to our next slide and do a quick overview. So you have two properties here. They are literally attached all the way through when you go west to the east. We are on the north side. Now, our site is actually non-conforming, that the minimum width is 150 feet, and we're actually 68 feet. But beyond that, we also have setback issues, because both buildings or both properties are crossing the property line. On the next slide. So there, you're seeing the aerial. Again, we're on that north side, and you're gonna be seeing how we are being attached to the project. There are three structures on our project. The one that we discussed with you last month is in the middle, and now we're gonna be talking about the most eastern one. On the next slide, you start seeing literally from the ocean. I think one of the things, too, that council wants to always be concerned with, what are you gonna visually see? What we're proposing, we're gonna be telling you today, or hopefully you agree that you're never gonna see it. So this is our structure here. This is actually a three-story structure. It's pretty unique in that the sense is the primary bedroom, there's only one in this structure, and it's on the second floor. The elevator that we're gonna be proposing is gonna be on the west side, three-story tower. Next. So before, when we came, we actually came in for approval for partial demolition on this. We were removing 54 square feet of that structure. Over here, we're proposing 43 for the proposed elevator. Now, what the board asked us to do is, they said, you know, you're gonna be building within the side setback. We understand it's non-conforming, but are there any other options? So what I want to do is take you to the interiors of where the logical things would be to put the elevator and why it really doesn't make sense to go that way. The goal is not to be disruptive of this existing structure. Next. So here's where we are here. Again, that's the structure, that's what we're gonna be focusing on. It's built, it was built in the early 30s, also divided in the 30s. Next. So there's the front living room. This is one where if we were to put the elevator in here, we would not have to come before the board, because it would be within the setback. It would not be encroaching. But it just didn't make sense to break up this living room. Next. Is the dining room. You start looking at the ceiling treatments, everything. Actually, Mark Marsh was, who just left, had done the last renovation on this project. We're numbering these, because I want to point it out also in the floor plan, so you can see how we kind of went through this. Next. This is actually their stairwell. This is the vertical part of the three-story structure. It's kind of interesting. If we were to put it in here, we actually would still be building over the setback, because this whole portion is over the setback. Next. Unfortunately, when you come up, you'd be hitting one of the primary doors. So again, it just didn't seem to make sense, and we wanted to point that out to the board when we did this. Next. So here's where you're looking at it. One was the living room, two's the dining room, and that is the so-called stairwell and primary bathroom above. Here's where we're closing. One of the things that we are doing with this new design is we're gonna be taking some of the elements of the historic part of the building and reusing them. Next. So what we've done is, there is a door that's existing coming through here. We're relocating the door to the elevator, so you will be able to access the elevator from the outside, go into the building, go right up. So somebody doesn't have to go through the house all the way through to get to that foyer. Next. So here's where we are on that second floor. Again, the whole thing is a primary bedroom. That's number four. That's where the elevator would have come up. It also didn't make sense to, you know, when you only have one bathroom, or I should say, one bedroom. If we did have to come up internally, they actually wouldn't be able to use their house while under construction, because it wouldn't be able to get access. Next, please. We did originally have it going to the third floor. Right now, that is used as an office slash gym. The board recommended that we only go two stories, and we did drop it off, so it's not going any longer to the third floor. Next, please. Visibility. Presentation, I use Tom Smith, now I use Tom Stanley. He's at 10 feet. He's about the only guy that might be able to see above that. You're not gonna see this structure. Next slide. Now we're going up 20 feet. You still can't even see the three-story structure. So my point is, this, as a two-story elevator, it will not be seen from the public right-of-way. Next, please. So here is the existing elevator. That's the existing door that we're gonna be reusing. You are seeing the property line. Here is the setback. This is actually where we're proposing the elevator. Next. Again, just an actual photo. You can see that it is very densely vegetated. Once this goes in, again, will not be visible. Next. So there's the proposed, the original one went up three stories. Now we have to go down to two. You're seeing that we are eight foot five off the property line. There's the relocated door. And we've added some decorative shutters and windows to enhance the elevation. Next, please. Now you're really seeing to the south of us, and you're getting to see how this courtyard is. Here's where our tower is. Next, please. There's where the elevator will be. Again, in plan, you won't be seeing this from the adjacent property, which is just as important as what it is for us. Next, please. Again, you can see all the vegetation, and we'll slide in the proposed elevator. Next. So it's going right in there. Next, please. One of the things that was brought up at the meeting is that this is a historic structure. Although you guys do not have any regulations for historic structures, we wanted it to be known that when you are doing an addition on a historic structure, you want to do it in such a way that in the future, should that element want to be taken away, you can. The way we've designed this elevator, it could be taken away in the future. Should somebody want to put this on the national register and actually deem that not being historic. The other part is, you never want to build in front of the main historic structure of the right-aways. This one is in the back. Even if it was on the ocean, it's still on the backside of the ocean, so it's never seen from the public right-of-way. Next, please. And these are just the different views. This is actually looking south towards Bob's property. We have some. We have some false windows, if you will. It'll give the real appearance of rear windows. It's just that they're going to be blacked out on the inside. Next, please. Seeing from the north, we actually will never see it, but that is the element. Next, please. Okay, so this is your code. Town section 7075. I highlighted basically C subsection B, A, B, and C. You know, normally when you're looking at this type of stuff, you gotta wonder, does it really apply? And this one, it really does. Informant locations for the addition are impractical, significantly more expensive or have a significant more expensive or have significant adverse impact on the site plan in terms of the overall site design relationship between the site plan elements, including but not limited to structures, patios, driveways, and landscape. B, the location of the addition shall represent a logical extension of the existing floor plan in terms of function and design. And then of course, C, the exterior design of the addition shall present a logical extension of the existing structure and shall be consistent with all applicable design standards in this chapter. We feel and we hope you guys feel the same way that it does do that. And with that, I'll conclude our presentation. Thank you very much.
This is the most interesting house in the town of Gulfstream. It's Miradero. When the FIPS developed Gulfstream, they were proposing the development of this town with new homes. The Great Depression hit and put a total stop to it, except for that house. Miradero, as I understand it, was the only home built in Gulfstream during the depths of the Great Depression. And because the homes are connected, the impact on the neighbor is really the focus, it seems to me, for the boards and the commission. So I'd like to hear from, from Mr. Ganger.
I didn't expect this. But he is prepared.
This, the good news is that if in the future, and it may be a long time in the future, and it may be a couple of years from now, somebody comes in and for good reason wants to acquire the whole house and restore it as needed to the way it was when it was built, that this is, this is a solution that, that will work. I don't think, other than the noise and mess while they're building it, I don't think that we on the, on the south side will be affected very much. You're going to have to go climb a wall to look at this and see what, what has been done. The important thing though is that there is an ability to reverse and, and, and build and end up with the house the way it looked when it was built. As you know, for those of you who ever visited us, we kept our side as close to exactly the way it was, including even the furniture from, from the original home. The, the north side, to its credit, Mark Marsh really did a heck of a job restoring the house and yet adding amenities that were more concurrent, like air conditioning and so forth. The, the, I think it's very important, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, for bringing it out, that as we emerge into our second 100th year, we've got to keep some record of the way we, we were in our halcyon days. And it is one of the few Vanderbilt houses that has remained the way it is for, for, for close to 100 years. So I think what, what, what the new owners have done is really admirable. They've thought it through. They had a need. They filled the need. And yet it, it can be restored to the way it was before. And maybe the new owner would want it to be the way it, way it's going to, where it's going to end up with an elevator. So I give both the owners, the new owners, who are awfully nice people by the way, and the architect a lot of credit for thinking it through and doing the most responsible job they could have done.
Very good. Thank you. Because obviously the elevator could not be put inside the house. And seemed to be protecting and preserving the architectural integrity of this historic and truly unusual building. Questions? Comments?
I appreciate his words.
If not, how about a motion? Mr. Vice Mayor?
There's some motions here. Two motions regarding setbacks. First motion is motion to approve a special exception to remove the construction of an elevator with a side setback for non-conforming single-family residents for section 7075C.
Second.
Renee?
Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Canfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Orthline.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Stanley.
Yes.
Mayor Morgan.
Yes.
Second motion is motion to approve a level three architectural site plan based on the finding that the addition of an elevator to the existing three-story main residence meets the minimum intended design manual applicable review standards.
Second.
Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Canfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Orthline.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Stanley.
Yes.
Mayor Morgan.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome, welcome to Gulfstream. Okay, let's move on. Town manager water service agreement update.
In here for more. Thank you, Mayor. The town received a draft agreement last week, which was sent, although the city was still working on some details. There are a lot of terms in the contract that will need to be adjusted and negotiated. So at this point, it's a work in progress. I expect some, some back and forth with the city and we'll just keep you updated as that progresses.
Questions? Very good. CIP update?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. I just need to remind everyone of our public meeting that will be at the Gulfstream School on Tuesday at 6:00 PM. Baxter and Woodman, our engineers and the contractor, roadway construction will be there, be there. They'll give a short PowerPoint presentation and then open it up for questions. I'm sure we're going to have a lot of questions about it. Hopefully have a good crowd there. We are putting some hangars out.
Yes, they're arriving today.
Did we get them in time?
They're supposed to be delivered today. It says they're in Boca and FedEx, so.
Very good. So we want to get the word out.
Get those hangers out today. And so we're looking forward to it. The agenda will be project objectives, project summary, construction management, introduction of construction contractor, construction, construction schedule and what residents can expect and how to stay informed. I've got to throw it to Renee for a second so that we can explain to you how we're going to keep our residents informed about this project.
We're gonna, we got a domain name specifically Core Area Roadwork for these 300 days during the project. So on the website, I'm going to put in a colored block on the front page at the top of the page. So no need to scroll anywhere, click anywhere. It'll say Core Area Roadwork. There will be a link on it. Click on that link and Baxter and Woodman will weekly update the website with pictures, with what has happened during that week. So that if you are up north during this time, you could click on that link and see what's going on on your street, what has happened during that week. You can even go back to past weeks. So say, for example, it's this week and then next week, you could still go back to this prior week, pictures, what, what has been done. So I don't have to upload it. I just have to get the website going and then they will do the uploading of the pictures and everything.
That's great.
And there is a 24-hour hotline. So we'll have one phone number to pass out on Tuesday night. It is literally a 24-hour hotline. If, if they don't get a person, then they can leave a message and those messages are reviewed the next day. So the phones will be Rick Chipman, who is the project manager for Baxter and Woodman, and one or two others. But we decided that was probably the best way to do it. I know we talked about that a little bit.
Yeah.
I've talked to Rebecca. I mean, they've done this hundreds of times. And so they know how to deal with that. And so I felt comfortable.
And they could speak to the hotline Tuesday night.
Monitoring that, that line.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, good.
They could speak to that on Tuesday night too, if there are any questions regarding that hotline.
That's great. Well, get the word out for everyone who's here, meeting Tuesday at the school, six o'clock, to explain our CIP project in the core and what, what, what can be expected. All right, we, we have an Athenian fellow. Mr. Dunham?
So I wanted to recognize Town Clerk Renee Basil for achieving the recognition as a Paul Craig Athenian Fellow. Renee is a member of the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. The Athenian Leadership Society is a subset of the IIMC. It is an education program for clerks to further their leadership skills in their positions as municipal clerks. Renee has completed the requirements to be pinned as a Paul Craig Athenian Fellow. And what that really meant was about 120 hours of education that she went through to achieve this. That would have been 60 hours in class and 60 hours of reading. If she goes, she would be pinned at the 2024 Annual Conference in Calgary, Alberta.
Which I will not be going.
That's up to her. But I'd like to congratulate her. She's always working to increase her skills.
That's great. I mean, you had, there were big, big shoes to fill with Rita Taylor, but you have done an outstanding job. You bring prestige to the town and honor to yourself. So congratulations. All right, let's move on. Fee schedule.
Thank you, Mayor. So we can adopt updated fees via resolution. We most recently did so in 2019 when we adopted a timeframe for construction projects. So if you exceeded that time, we then had a fee associated with that. I don't believe we adjusted anything else. So it's been a number of years in talking with recent applicants for artificial turf. There was a concern about small projects of artificial turf, which were level two, which would require a $1,000 application fee. So if you're putting in a very small amount of artificial turf and it's only a few thousand dollars, you would still be required to pay a $1,000 application fee. So we're proposing that we adjust that. And I believe Renee had circulated our fee schedule. There's the two highlighted portions at the bottom. We're going to adjust the level two to 10% of construction value, not to exceed $1,000 with a minimum of $250. So previously, level two applications were $1,000. So this would allow for smaller projects to have a more consistent price based on what they're actually doing. Now, level twos are anything from 300 square feet addition up to 50% of the structure. So level twos do capture very large potential projects. Perhaps even if, you know, anyway. So that is what we're recommending for by way of a level two. When we look at artificial turf applications in the future, we may need to do some adjustments to the code and we'll bring those to you as well. Also, part of this is an adjustment to the level one review fee. It was previously $0. The staff did that review just as, as part of our normal job responsibilities. But just like we do level two or level three, you know, there are fees associated with twos and threes and none associated with level ones. So Renee had suggested that we consider a nominal $100 application fee for level ones, just consistent with what we have for level twos and threes to offset some of the staff time and expenses in, in doing those services. You know, I put that out to discussion from the commission. I certainly don't have a dog in the fight whether we want to charge $100 or nothing. But a recent, just by way of an example, recent applications came in, you know, for a mailbox. So, you know, we're going to charge you $100 to make sure your mailbox is conforming. But another application came through, which was 250 square foot addition, readjusting some walls and windows on a home in, in place I'll select. So we did, that did require sitting down with an architect, going over the code, understanding, okay, is this captured with a level one? It is a, it is a smaller project by square footage, but it is fairly large. Are you, you know, what are your windows looking like? What, what's your door look like? Things like that. So a little bit more comprehensive than just, you know, is your mailbox acceptable? So based on that, that range, I'm just kind of putting it out to you for consideration. Again, this is not anything that we would be taking action on today. We're just looking for direction and then we would adopt an adjusted fee schedule next month via resolution.
Let's, let's put it up for discussion. Thomas?
Well, I've always been for, you know, kind of adjusting the fees, compensating for staff time and staff review, which we almost require for everything that comes through here. Like when I first started here, 11 or 12 years ago, there wasn't a lot of fees for a lot of different things. Municipal maintenance searches was one of those. Kind of a pet peeve of mine. I think the level one, I mean, I think if you're filing an application and it's requiring some sort of staff approval, you should probably have to pay something, which stands to reason other municipalities have done for a lot, $100. I'm not quite sure if you're, you know, blowing out all your windows and changing doors, that it should really be a level one anyway. But, you know, that might be a discussion for another day. And then the level two, what's the, what's like the large? I know you just gave an example. What's the largest level two type situation, like an accessory structure or an addition or a loafer?
So you're talking about level two?
Yes.
Right, so a level two would be, the, the bottom would be 300 square feet. The top would be 50% of the square footage of the structure. So, you know, for a 5,000 square foot structure, you know, anything up to 2,500 square feet, right? So it, it does capture some things that are pretty significant.
I mean, obviously you've got a building permit fee, which is separate because obviously you're expensive. But so they have to be cognizant of that. I mean, do we feel that on the level two, that, you know, not to exceed $1,000 is fair to residents in conjunction with staff review and the fact that you're going to have an expensive building permit fee coming thereafter?
No, sure. No, sure. So that's what it is now. Right now it is, it's $1,000. So really the, there's no adjustment there. It was really just to look at very, very small projects. Honestly, when we were looking at level twos and the anticipated cost being 10%, I, I don't know how many other applications, other than small applications for artificial turf, would be less than $1,000. So that would really be consistent with whatever level two you have.
Yeah, the way this came up was, you know, we, we'd never allowed artificial grass right now. Now we're allowing it, but we wanted to make sure that it wasn't just delegated to staff, that it was closely monitored by the ARPB. And so an application came in for a very small amount of artificial grass, which is what we wanted. But it was $1,000 because it pops right up to, to level two. And so it, it just seemed manifestly unfair. And staff got together and kind of came up with this approach, which I think makes sense, at least on those small artificial grass projects. And there may be other things that come up that make, make us reevaluate this. But, you know, 10% of a $1,000 project, you know.
I've been advising everybody, you need a permit for artificial grass. Like, we need a permit. And like, yes, we need a permit for artificial grass. So, yeah, okay.
I mean, is there any reason to apply the same type of structure to level, level one, which is a percentage of value with a minimum of 100, given, as you said, trade, some of those projects might be a little more extensive, another level one?
Sure. Any of that could definitely be something we do. It just, you know, additional paperwork for them to submit to show the, the value of construction. But certainly I think that's, that would be fair.
I like that.
Well, right.
Artificial turf is level.
Well, that, that's what I was, that's what I was referring to earlier.
Yeah, I agree with that, though.
I don't know if. I don't know if, what we want to do with artificial turf, given some of the applications that we've seen. Adjusting that approval level or, you know, putting it in a percentage. I think that we still have some way to go by way of processing applications and seeing the application. But, you know, we did see a large application at 3140 Polo, Apollo on Palmway in the backyard. Fairly significant percentage of the backyard, but it was heavily landscaped walls on the side. You are never going to see it, but it still did require Level 2 review. So that's an example of a project that the ARPB approved with a significant amount of artificial turf. But we're also looking at one of the homes across from the the bath and tennis parking lot, where, you know, the lots are very small, and they just wanted a small patch of artificial turf, because not a lot of grass grows in that area because of all the vegetation. And that, you know, if we could approve that on Level 1, it would make sense. It's a very small amount of square footage, but how do we, where's the sliding scale? Do we put it on a certain square, square footage? Do we put it a percent into the lot? And, you know, just trying to figure out how to, how to manage this. I think it was the right thing to do initially to make it a Level 2, to have ARPB review it. But maybe over time, we'll see that it could be something that would be acceptable to have staff handle, using the discretion to move it up at a Level 2 if warranted.
Yeah, let's see how it goes. We never allowed it at all, and now all of a sudden we allow it. But we really wanted, if you look at the code, it's very restrictive as to the amount and location of the artificial grass, because we don't want to become one of those towns where people are putting artificial grass all over. It really will impact, if it is visible in any way, the aesthetics of our town. So at least it seems to me that that was our, that was the way we wanted to move forward when we, when we approved the ordinance. Have it reviewed by the ARPB. Let's, let's give it a few years and see how it goes before we make any changes to it, except fee schedule.
Yeah, I mean, this is the best example of a very small request. It's just 100 square feet. I'm not sure how big that table is. It might come close to that, but we're good with keeping it like it is and saying, how many of these that we get?
Well, before we went off on artificial turf, Michael had brought up making a percentage of the project a Level 1 fee. The argument against that is, you know, this is, this is their job. Taxpayers pay for staff to do this work. Yet some projects take much more of their time than others, and so a fee would seem reasonable. I'm not quite sure what the right decision is. That's why we're talking about it. And maybe you want to think about it over the next month, and we can revisit this again next month.
Are there a lot of applications for this artificial turf?
We've only had, I believe, three. Yeah, three.
Three. And just the one is really tiny. I'm surprised they came in. I didn't say that.
How often is the mailbox scenario came up? Is that a one-off? Because that's.
How often do we?
I've only had one.
Okay, okay. Well, that's because no one knows about it.
Yeah, I think so.
If we, if we were to see a new manatee mailbox, though, we would, we would ask them about it.
So do you want to think about this some more and revisit it next month? Or are you happy with staff's recommendation at this point? How would you like to proceed?
Well, for me, it's a little bit of ease of use, too. I mean, that's not going to make or break the town's budget one way or another, right? So for me, if it's, if it's going to create complexity in terms of trying to add a layer of calculations to figure out project cost to apply it to a Level 1, I mean, it's not, like I said, it's not a, it's not a huge issue for me, but just something to consider.
Mayor?
Absolutely. Hey.
I don't really sure how this works.
Just step right up. Identify yourself for the record.
Paul Lyons, 2945 Polo Drive, reporting in. But more seriously, I thought your comment as relates to the residents having paid the tax, and they're expecting a service, and for routine things, ask people to pay something, it's just going to irritate the residents, and I don't think it's a good PR, and it's not going to make or break the town. So I think that, and also you're creating a disincentive. If somebody had to pay $100 to put up $125 mailbox, how many people are going to come into Town Hall? So those are my thoughts. Thank you.
I think those are good thoughts. I mean.
It's the first thing that came up. I mean, you want to incentivize people to come in and have approval of their projects. And $100 is not that much, but it might be, you know, with a $100 mailbox. All right, let's do this.
Let's think about it.
Let's bring it up next, let's bring it up next month. Think about it, and we'll, we'll make a decision in, in April. Okay? Yes, sir.
Mayor, I forgot that. There's one other, I don't know, under manager's reports. I have Anthony here for us. You know, we're, we're still trying to get the rust off of our monument sign coming into town. Let you explain all of the different methods you've tried.
Everything under the sun and acid is what I've used to clean that sign, which I'm not supposed to because of the cocaine is very soft.
There are other signs that are like that, especially Golf View on one side. But there, but, but I think it's the well water that is causing the rust. Now, we had, we were able to clean the Banyan sign.
Right. Those had just surface mold rust on top of it, not rust, I'm sorry, just mold fungicide. We used a 30-second, like a bleach. It's kind of like a gel substance. We sprayed it on there, and Wayne scrubbed it, and it came off. I didn't use a pressure cleaner on it, just for the simple fact that I'm afraid that I might do more damage to the cocaine already as it is. He's been using Lime Away, without me knowing, he's been using it on the sign. And truthfully, it's lightening it up. It's working. It's just a very long process. I got some CLR, which is similar to the Lime Away. It has other substances of chemicals that are in it that'll probably help break and decompose the actual rust in it. But I'm not just sure if it's going to actually work completely or not. But it's lightening it up, and it's starting to change. You can see it, so.
I just wanted you to know, we're not ignoring it. We're just trying to be careful in how we address it.
I thought we had talked about this at one point, and you're, you had proposed cleaning it with high-pressure sand or water and then sealing it. Something that, that would make it easier for the rust to be removed.
Right. The, the part of the problem that we're having is, Mayor, that their, the irrigation that they have, they didn't have it in front of the sign originally when we first replaced the sign after the incident. The gentleman had the seizure, and he hit it and damaged it. They came behind us after we had everything installed and put a sprinkler head in front of it. They didn't have it before, but they put one in front of it. So now it's absorbing.
Mind about how that might be addressed?
We would have to let them know that we need to remove it once we get to the point that if we're able to completely take all the rust off of it, but we're fighting it anyway because they still have the sprinkler there. So we would have to have that sprinkler removed and replaced behind the sign, so it don't get any other overspray on it. So as we're treating it, we can get rid of some of this rust that's on it and lighten it back up, and then I can seal it. The other option was replacing it with a concrete stamped cocaine look, but the gentleman hasn't made it through yet. I've already reached out to him twice, and he's, he says he can come by. It's just time schedule for him is kind of tight right now because he's so busy.
Is there a reason for the sprinkler heads placement where it is?
I have no idea. There's just, when they redid the irrigation stuff that's out on that main medium area, they put one there. Why they put one there, I have no idea.
Are you talking about St. Andrews?
Yes.
On the tennis court side.
And Fogarty has one on his end of his property that hits the sign, and it's the same thing.
Yeah.
And they're on well there.
All right. So maybe we can speak to the property owners and get their agreement. We would take care of relocating.
And then that way I can keep doing what I'm doing, you know, as far as what Wayne decided to do, which actually is working really well, because I can see the different discoloration on it.
Okay.
It's cleaning it up, and it has saved the town the money of having to replace it, and we can just seal it once it's done. At least to the best of our ability to where we can get it cleaned enough, so we can just seal it.
Okay. I think we have some direction.
Stay for the, for one, the last item. You can just stay here.
Okay, ARPB meeting is March 28th, about 8:30 for anyone who wishes to attend. Finance report, Mr. Donum?
Yes, this report represents 41% of our budget. Next month, or during the month, we're going to be moving some money around internally that we can do. But we'll be coming back to, to point that out to you at the next meeting.
Okay. Any questions on the budget? If not, chief, please report.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, please accept the report as submitted. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them. I will make you aware that we did have an officer, Officer Alan O'Neil, who's been with us for just over five years, announce his retirement. He was retired when we hired him from a previous organization. So he's now spent approximately 30 years in law enforcement, and his last day with the town was March 4th. We've already started the hiring process with an officer to refill that vacancy, and we're pretty confident that that will likely happen probably within the next 60 days.
Very good. Any questions of the chief? If not, we'll accept the report as submitted. Let's move on then to the Gulfstream School Development Agreement. Mr. Mazzaro?
Thank you, Mayor. So I've provided the Third Amendment to Developers Agreement. While it is under items for commission action, I want to wait until we have approval from the school first. This is the document that has been provided to the school through their attorney, who I've been working with. They had some adjustments after our last meeting. So if you recall, I believe, two months ago, we wanted to hold them to a three-year approval. They then asked for, for five years again, and the commission was very gracious in granting that. There were also some other items that were discussed, including a clause that specifically carved out the Gulfstream School Delray Beach Campus, just to make sure that they, that there was a very clear understanding that students enrolled at that school would not count towards that enrollment cap. So last month, I said that I would take the commission's instruction and adjust the agreement to encompass five, not three, school years. So that is in there, and add a clause that specifically carved out the Delray Beach Campus. So that's been done. I've been in communication with the school's legal counsel, who indicated that they wanted to revisit the, the approval in three years. So even though they're getting an approval for five years, they want to make sure that the parties talk about it three years, so sort of midway through. So I've included under paragraph 3, increased enrollment impact, which references the capital improvement project, improvement on the roads, and how we will be able to better understand the impact of that increased enrollment figure once the roads are a little bit wider. So really tying it to improvements, acknowledging that traffic is a primary concern for that, that increased enrollment, and we'll meet again to, you know, discuss that impact and, and discuss a longer-term renewal. So at this point, it is in the, the school's hands, and the, their council told me this morning, we are thankful for their revisions to the agreement, and we're looking forward to continuing our partnership with the town. So ideally, we'll have that approved in the coming week or so, and then we'll have that for final approval during next month.
Very good. Update on 2900 Avenue Osale?
Thank you, Mayor. Last month before the meeting, Gulfstream School, I'm sorry, Gulfstream Golf Club's attorney notified the town and the property's contract purchaser that there were some issues with the, the agreement. Those issues are currently still being worked out by the contract purchaser and the big club. The town has received no additional legal documents to review, and at this point, we're waiting on the other parties to come to some sort of agreement. So then, once they're in agreement, then we can sort of iron out what the town needs to do. I've spoken to a club member a number of times this month, and he is keeping me updated on the status. I appreciate the club working on this matter, so it can bring some finality to these discussions by way of an easement agreement that is acceptable to all parties involved.
The club's centennial celebration is, is it this weekend?
Saturday.
Yes.
All week, actually.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a long process, but obviously, they have, they're focused on something else right now. Perhaps next week, we could, we could sit down with everyone and maybe work, work out a resolution, a final resolution of this, of this, this item. All right, thank you. Let's move on then to the CIP. I think we switched the bid approval. I'm sorry.
Yeah, we're doing the bid approval.
Stormwater drainage?
This is, can you step up here, Anthony? I think they went through a bid approval to make repairs to a stormwater drainage pipe issue over on Place Osale. I think it's fairly obvious who the low bidder is here. We reached out to three companies. One did not respond. I just wanted Anthony to explain to you what we're actually doing there. This is, this is on the Avenue Osale, the circle.
Commission, there's a actual drain line that runs from in front of the new construction over at 2665 Avenue Osale, and also Mr. Mara's home that feeds from across the street from that new house that's being built to the east side and out into the intercoastal. It runs in between him and the, I think it's the Alexanders that live just north of him. I believe that's who they are. But it runs underneath their, their property line, underneath the fence that they have. They have set of clues that are probably about 12 feet tall. The pipes has collapsed towards the end of the outfall of the seawall. It's kind of separating itself a little bit. I'm not sure if it's because of the actual seawall, I guess, voids that are caused underneath it because of old age, I guess. But it's, the pipes are collapsing in different angles on, throughout the whole stretch of 152 feet. There are some rust holes that are created within the pipe itself because of the age of the pipe, and also created coming in and the tide coming in, and rebar starting to expand because they're rusting inside internally through the concrete, and it's pushing out, and it's causing voids inside the pipe. So those voids are causing dirt to come into the system, and then obviously run out into the intercoastal. So it has to be constantly cleaned.
The, the property owners?
Property is collapsing on the top of the pipe.
Okay.
I've, I've filled it in twice already since I've been here to level the property out again. But, you know, within six months' time.
I just wanted to tell you why, that, I mean, these numbers are so high.
Yeah, and they have to redo the whole entire line. It's either they replace the whole line itself, or they line it with a fiberglass lining, which they curate inside of the actual pipe itself, which I'm not really too fond of. I prefer to slip-line it, but because of the complex of the actual job itself and where it's located, it's not going to be very easy to slip-line it. And sliplining is a pipe within a pipe, which HDPE piping is, which they use as a poly pipe.
We got it. It's, it's going to be involved, but it has to be done. So, and what a discrepancy in the, in the bid process. Shenandoah Pipe, reputable? You feel confident?
Yes, they've been around for a very long time. I've dealt with them for quite some time.
Right. Well, another ones we should use. Is there a motion?
Thanks.
I'll move to the contract to Shenandoah Pipe Inspection and Restoration Specialist.
Second? Renee?
Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Canfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Orthwyne?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Stanley?
Yes.
Mayor Morgan?
Yes. Waste Management Contract Extension. Mr. Donum?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. So our five-year contract extension with Waste Management expires at the end of March. We intend to discuss. Uh, we began to discuss, uh, how to address that back in December, uh, five years ago. Waste Management proposed us a twenty-six percent increase and negotiated that down to six percent. Uh, this year, uh, the proposal was, uh, for a sixty-two percent increase from our current, uh, phase. And, uh, so we, uh, we tried to negotiate that down. We've asked for an extension. That's what's on the agenda today, uh, for a six-month extension. Uh, the extension, uh, itself represents a twenty-two percent increase. Um, our staff and our, uh, our, uh, contractor, uh, who helped us last year, or five years ago with our contract negotiations, met with, uh, Barbara Herrera, who is here, I think her supervisor, uh, on the phone. Uh, tried to negotiate, but there was no movement, uh, whatsoever, uh, on part of Waste Management. Uh, and again, by design, I was not involved in, in those discussions. Trey was, Trey wants to comment on those. He's more than welcome to do that. Uh, but, uh, we do need to, uh, enter into the, uh, extension with Waste Management. And then upon approval of that, uh, uh, the staff will begin, uh, the competitive solicitation process, which includes either an invitation to bid, request for proposals, or an invitation to negotiate.
Yeah, obviously we have to agree to this, uh, this extension since our contract expires this month. But as we saw in the stormwater train pipe, uh, bids, there's significant price differences and if Waste Management is not willing to negotiate, then we should put it out to bid. Uh, any comments?
Yeah, just one, one question. It's more a historical question. Given the big price increases, does the town ever thought about going to once a week versus twice? Only thinking my own situation. We fill, my wife and I fill one trash can a week. So it's, i- is that ever, ever been discussed or is it, is it two times a week is, is the standard that, that everybody likes?
It's a good question, I think.
Yeah.
That's just how it's been done.
Right. I mean, we've, um, since I've been here, we've only had one negotiation. That was five years ago. And, uh, our residents like the service that, uh, we provide to, or Waste Management provides to them, uh, at twice a week and the backdoor service. Uh, and so we, we wanted to continue the, the ser- the level of service uh, that they, that they're used to. We, we've not put that out to, to the residents to see if that might be, uh, uh, acceptable to them or not. We just didn't even consider that.
Joan, historically, has there ever been?
And I don't think it's ever been suggested we do once a week. Um, I, I think there are families in town that once a week might be a little over, you know, a little light, um, picking up, especially in the summer months.
Middle of summer, that might be.
Yeah, I mean, not in the winter, but during the summer, things get kind of um, not so pleasant. Um, but it's never been discussed as far as I ever remember.
Yeah. Like I said, once, personal experience, we only have trash picked up once a week because there's no use for us to put it out kind of on Wednesday because it's not, not really much there, but.
You're not.
I hate, I hate to say it, but it's more, it's a lot.
But I, I do think, yeah, for this, you know, people who are living, but maybe people with the families sort of be more of an issue and also I would say more the summer months.
Yeah.
Um, than the winter.
Yeah.
But there's no way to make two times a week in the summer and once a month.
Well, it's a, it's a question maybe to ask in a negotiation, right? Because everything's open when you're out there, which is X number of months we want, once a week and X number of months, well, twice a week. But I know there's a lot of variables to try and keep the cost down. That's all, um.
Yeah.
They, they are big eye popping numbers, but as the mayor said, maybe just putting it out, the bid's going to compress those numbers anyway.
We have put it out to bid before. Um, and that's, I think, why we got the contracts down. So, uh, as I remember, there's other people to get this out, but, um, so I think that's what we should do.
Yeah, the lack of transparency and the sixty-two percent increase is kind of tough to, to stomach. Understanding prices have gone up in the last five years and it's a different climate than it was then, but, um, yeah, that's tough.
Uh, no, absolutely. Uh, you know, they did ask for a large increase five years ago and they did get, you know, a somewhat significant increase based on, you know, a, a transaction that was negotiated between the parties and included an annual, uh, adjustment tied to the water sewer trash index. So it's industry specific. Um, you know, so I, the, I, I just can't wrap my head around an outright refusal from our representative and her supervisor to even say, we'll go down to fifty percent. I mean, it was just sixty-two percent is the last and final number. That's it. Um, and it's just comparable to what we saw from Shenandoah at twenty thousand and then another person who said, I will do it for sixty thousand, absolutely one hundred percent. You give me three times what the job is worth and I will happily do the work. So I feel like that is kind of the approach that Waste Management is taking. Um, we're happy to be your provider and we will continue to do so at the, the significantly higher price. Um, you know, so I, I think that there are other, uh, waste hauling providers that would be, uh, happy to, to bid on us. And we believe that the market, uh, would, would be somewhat competitive based on, uh, speaking with our consultant and understanding who is active in the area.
All right. Uh, but they've graciously given us a six-month extension at a significant increase that I think we have to agree to. So is there a motion regarding, uh?
Do we have to do six months if we find a provider sooner? I mean, if we go out to look for other people because
Sure, so.
I hate to go into negotiation with other people and saying, look what they've done to us, you know? We're paying this much now that we've all lost our rate.
No, sure. Um, there, I, I did review the contract language and there does not appear to be a termination for convenience or anything like that. We're essentially, if they were failing to meet acceptable levels of service, then we could terminate. Otherwise, we'd be locked in for the six months.
Six months, okay.
Which will, would give us some opportunity to develop a procurement, make sure that we have, you know, a meeting with the vendors. They have a good understanding of the level of service that's required. They can give us an accurate price and have a good understanding based on conversations of, you know, what, what it's like to, uh, be a waste hauler in Gulfstream.
Yeah, and we've got three weeks to go here.
I know.
So we've kind of got our back against the wall, but we're, we're by no means beholden to that number in the future. Uh, is there a motion?
Uh, motion to approve the seventh addendum to the solid waste and recycling collection, uh, of Waste Management for an additional six months as presented.
I'll second.
Ms. Beasley.
Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Canfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Orthwine.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Stanley.
Yes.
Mayor Morgan.
Yes. All right, let's move on then. Um, appointment of an ad hoc committee regarding massing. Is it Mr. Nazaro or Mr. Don I'm going to be introduced to?
The, uh, I think you have a, uh, a note here from staff report that suggests the, the members that I think today our goal was to officially.
So in, uh, about ten years ago, we had an ad hoc committee study a similar issue that was chaired by Mr. Boardman. So we do have some sort of historical, um, data to look at in referring this issue to, um, you know, sort of a, a subset of residents in town that aren't necessarily on the board. Um, so the ARPB looked at that and they decided you're referring it to us, but we believe maybe some additional resident input would be beneficial. So they were able to tap three town residents they believe would provide some meaningful impact into, uh, these discussions. Uh, along with, um, Mr. Lyons, uh, who's here, who would, uh, who was suggested to chair, uh, that, uh, committee. Uh, Mr. Murphy, uh, in Place House Lay and, and Tom Smith as well, um, who spent a lot of time on the ARPB and, and some time on the commission. So we do have a lot of historical knowledge and then also some, some new perspectives um, that would, uh, be tasked to study this issue. An ad hoc committee cannot be created by the ARPB. So they are asking the town commission to form that ad hoc committee constituted with the members listed on the memo. Uh, and if you have any direction or additional discussion that you would like to have, uh, you know, Mr. Lyons is here. I invited him because I knew this was, was going to be on the agenda as a, as an important item. Certainly he's, he's fully aware of, of those discussions, but just if there wanted to be any additional direction or discussion from the commission, uh, on, on the ad hoc committee. And then those meetings would be sort of, uh, at, uh, the direction of the chairman. I, I think that previously they were uh, bi-month, again, going back ten years ago, I think they were bimonthly, uh, and they had, um, individuals come in and, and, and talk to them and, and study the, a, a variety of different issues that had impacts, zoning related impacts on the town. Uh, so this is really, uh, you know, forming that committee with, with Paul Lyons as the chairman and we would work with him to set agendas, pull in contractors and, and direct those discussions as, as he and the, the ad hoc committee, uh, saw fit.
Uh, Paul, you've already introduced yourself previously, so you probably don't have to do it for the record. But, uh, you, you and I have spoken about this. Um, would you please? I know you've given us a lot of thought as to, uh, who should be on the committee, which is set forth in this memo. But your plan for moving forward, the time period and, and how you'd like to go about it, if you could explain it to the.
All right. Thank you for asking. Um, so I think process is really the critical element to being successful in this effort. Um, and we need to carefully define the mission. Um, so I, I actually asked the town commission, uh, to confirm what the mission is and my understanding is to look at massing within the core district. And what that, that would be of focus and to come up with some approaches, uh, ideas to try to maintain, uh, the current atmosphere we enjoy on Polo Drive in particular and, and Gulfstream Drive. Those two lanes that are critical to the core district, uh, with the landscaping. It's the emphasis as opposed to hardscape, uh, and trying to manage that redevelopment of, of many homes over the next hundred years. Um, you know, we're approaching a hundred years and now we need to have a plan of how we want to see the town evolve in this period of time. In terms of timing, uh, I, I like the notion of, um, every other week or bimonthly. Um, I like to see it, um, resolved if possible, um, before the summer months. Um, I think that's going to be a function of what resources, uh, we would like to call upon. Um, we've discussed in commission meetings, the notion of getting third-party opinions. People who have core competency, um, architects, city planners. Um, I know that Greg has heard me say this too many times. Uh, he has a wonderful connection in Palm Beach with a fellow who's gone through some of these issues. But pick the brains of, of others. Um, I, I think that we would want to look at other towns. I, I've publicly said this before. The village of Southampton has, uh, developed some rules, codes, policies as relates to these kind of issues in a similar kind of, uh, core district. So, um, calling upon the right participants, which I think we've established, uh, a, a good representative group from the town. Um, getting outside experts to come in and comment. And I've identified about ten different sections of the code that I believe, and I'll, I'll see, um, sit down with staff and, and see if they want to add to that. But there are certain very obvious sections in the code that we would want to talk about. Uh, and I would, I'm going to work hard to get public input. If people come to the meeting. So it's not just the ad hoc committee, but it's the public and then we then make a recommendation to, uh,
Great.
to commission.
Yeah, that's an important, uh, point, uh, as you've made and, and, and that is, we, we have been tiptoeing around the massing issue for the last ten years. Our design manual was promulgated in the nineteen nineties to preserve identifiable neighborhood districts. And the one most in threat of being changed is the core because of the crowded congestion of the, the nature of the, of the homes, relatively small lots, particularly interior ones. As property values increase, the desire for larger homes, uh, comes along with it. And we have, we have tinkered with the code and trying to address it, but, uh, the commission has determined that really something more thorough, uh, and detailed is required to come up with an approach to either keep the code the way it is or to make some modifications. We have some significant influencing factors. The BFE, the building floor elevation level is rising. We talk about it with every application. Yet our roof heights of thirty foot remain the same. So with your two-story homes. And those are really the ones that are, uh, can, can most threaten the, the, the district neighborhood and here in the core and possibly in, uh, Plac Osale. So that, that is one area that I think really needs to be evaluated. Uh, general massing itself with, um, you know, the amount of square footage, uh, to be allowed. Could that be adjusted up or down? Uh, should it be adjusted differently for single-story homes compared to two-story homes? These are things you'll need to, to evaluate with the assistance of some, perhaps some experts and, uh, other towns that have addressed the issue as well. And bringing the rest of the neighborhood into the discussion is important because this will have a direct impact on everyone in the core. So they need to be aware of what we're doing. Anyway, that's, that's my sense.
And so I think one element of, of the structure, um, would be to create incentives to discourage massing. And rather than be punitive, you can't do this, this is what you can do. So we're going to try to to give it a, a positive, um, environment for people to operate in. Uh, so thank you for asking me to do this and, um, it's not me. It's going to be that our committee is going to.
Well, thank you, Paul. Appreciate your agreeing to share it. Uh, you've got a great committee here. We need to, uh, move to approve this committee. So is there a motion?
I'd like, oh, go ahead. Oh, I'd like to move to approve the, uh, ad hoc committee as stated.
Uh, second.
Renee.
Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Mr. Canfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Orthwine.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Stanley.
Yes.
Mayor Morgan.
Yes. Okay. Um, voting delegates and aldermen for Palm Beach County League of Cities. Same all the time.
I'm going to volunteer again and all of you guys are going to be the, uh, backers.
Sounds great. Uh, is there a motion?
Motion to approve, uh, Town Manager Donovan as the voting delegate for the Palm Beach League of Cities with the Commissioners as the five.
Second.
Renee.
Commissioner Green.
Yes.
Commissioner Canfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Orthwine.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Stanley.
Yes.
Mayor Morgan.
Yes.
And might I add, as your supervisor of elections, that there is an election coming up on March nineteenth, which is the presidential preference primary, and this is a polling location. So we will be here from seven to seven. It's mostly for the Republican Party. Because the Democratic Party has already nominated Joe Biden as their soul.
So there is no private Democratic primary voting being held here.
No. It's just Republican.
Just Republican. Interesting. Okay. Um, items from, uh, commission members. Anyone wish comment? Well, then thank you all for coming. See you next month.
Thank you.